From the applicant to postpone this public hearing until the January 8th meeting. So if the commission would take a vote on that request.
I'll make a motion to move it to the January.
All in favor of moving the public hearing to the January 8th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that public hearing will be January 8th at 7:00 PM. Moving on to item B, Z 2018-1454 of Ecos Energy LLC requesting a special permit for construction of a 1 megawatt ground mounted solar facility on property located on Plainfield Pike, Route 14A, MAP 17, Block 36, Lot 69, industrial zoning district. Do we have someone speaking for the applicant?
I'm the chairman of the company, excuse myself for this item.
Okay, noted. And we will get you at the... Yep. Oh, and the reason why.
The reason is that I believe that the company I work for may be submitting a bid for some technical work.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Steve Royer. I represent Ecos Energy, the developer of the project. I did bring a projector and a quick run through of the project and then I'll open it up for questions. Obviously some comments.
Okay. And Steve, we will need a copy of the presentation for the record.
Yep, that's fine. I can give you an email of it. Sorry, I assumed the previous one was going to take some more time.
Yeah, is it possible to dim the light so we can see just a little bit better?
It's, the brightness will improve. Can everybody see? Again, I'm Steve Royer. I represent Ecos Energy. I'm a civil engineer by trade. We've developed and built over 23 projects across the United States. Ecos Energy is a development arm of Alco Energy who does all of the financing for the projects that we build. We do own and operate all of our projects. Several solar developers will construct them, get them operational and flip them to banks or lenders or other O&M communities or, or O&M companies. We do not do that because we hold on to our projects and we own all the land that's beneath our projects. Currently, we have over 44 megawatts in operation across the United States, California, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Minnesota, Georgia, and Vermont. The majority of our projects are 1 to 5 megawatts, which is distributed generation, usually in smaller rural communities. That is tied into the grid directly on solar to the utility, either under a rec program. Mostly in the Northeast, it's the Z rec, L rec and S rec programs, which were government determined and, and released by the utilities for a bid process. This is one of our first projects to be built in Indiana. That is a 1 megawatt facility footprint around 7 to 8 acres depending on how usable the land is. Perfect square is the most efficient way to build things. This is out in the Atlantic California in the desert. We built this three years ago. This is a 1 megawatt facility, about the same size of the project that we're proposing in California. This project is in Bitner, California. This is actually a 3 megawatt site with fixed field access, single access tracker. This project is in northern Vermont. We built this two years ago, again, 2 and 1/2 megawatts here. And most recent, this is one of the most recent projects. This is in Spencer, Massachusetts. This is our first construction in the Northeast and that was done two years ago. This is almost a 5 megawatt facility. And, and then most recently, some of you may have seen, the project that we developed and built off of Route 32 in the town of Lebanon, adjacent to Princeton. This project is 5 megawatts. It's our biggest footprint that we've constructed yet. And this project was approved by the Connecticut Siting Council because it was over a 1 megawatt facility. The reason why I'm presenting to the town is the project that we are proposing is 1 megawatt or less, which is the threshold of the Siting Council's review versus local planning and zoning to review and approve these projects. So the Plainfield Pike Solar Project, it is a ground mounted solar facility similar to all the pictures I just showed you. 1 megawatt capacity. There will be 3744 modules plus or minus, depending on the final electrical design. This will be delivering energy directly to EverSource through the Z rec program. The platform's life is anywhere from 25 to 40 years depending on length of interconnection, how we construct it electrically for rebuild, for future technologies, et cetera. The project location is a quarter mile east of 395 on 14A. It's a 22 acre parcel, zoned I-1. It is privately owned by our company. There is historical evidence of some logging that has occurred on the site, but currently it's undeveloped. Here's an aerial view of the project footprint. And the, the solar modules are located in the back half of the parcel, in the upland area outside of wetlands. Here's the project site plan. It's somewhat blurry, but basically broken up into two portions. We'll be accessing the site actually through an existing driveway to the Leo properties. We've already obtained easements, recorded that one. And the site will be split in two pieces and the interconnection will be out at Route 14. Here's a close up of the ground mounted racking system. We haven't officially designed foundations, footings, all of that kind of stuff. Obviously, we need to get some momentum towards approvals. Currently, this is a driven pier system. We've done some subsurface excavation, depending on rocks. That could be a driven screw. There's plenty of ways of doing it. Currently, we're actually building a ballast foundation as a 6 megawatt at the Lebanon site. We're attempting this to see basically how we're going to construct our future, future projects in 2019. There's some positives to a ballast system because we're not breaking the ground. You don't have subsurface concerns of rocks and other things that, that can potentially prevent a clean and quick and cost effective install. The site will be perimeter fenced and that isn't any code requirement. And all of our boxes and electrical equipment on site will be blocked. So if trespassers do get in, they, they still can't get to things that could hurt them. There will be a gravel access roadway similar to this that will be reconstructed all the way from Leo's site into our parcel down the hill and basically provide access to the main transformer, fire truck access to the site, as well as access to inverters and other equipment that is maintained. This is typical equipment pad on one of our projects. It's basically all of the main feeders from the solar facility will combine in that one box. And then it's upgraded and connected at the 1247 interconnection that is the EverSource interconnection that we'll be performing on that site. Our grid interconnection will look similar to this at the road. There'll be a re-closer, which is basically a shared switch between us and the utility. This will be like the main line down the street. This re-closer protects the site both from electrical spikes from the utility, so it doesn't ruin our equipment, and vice versa. So if we have an over voltage situation, that, that switch will shut down or any sort of faults, et cetera. As I stated, we do have an easement in place against this contact area with Leo properties. Main reason is this topography falls off. Currently, their access to our site, or their site through ours, and we ask to do the same. It helps with additional, or alleviating additional construction, any additional wetland buffers or wetland impacts are eliminated in that scenario. Benefits, impacts of the project, obviously renewable energy goals, both with the state, town, some say the world. We'll get into that. There's significant recovery benefits. It's a, it's a productive use of a fairly marginal piece of land. That area of land is zone industrial, it's set back, it has not the greatest access. And the impacts are very minimal and the use is temporary. We can still decommission the site when it's complete and use it for whatever industrial use we fit in the future. When it comes to adjacent homeowners, adjacent concerns from, from people that live near the site, there's, there's very minimal impacts to adjacent landowners. The, the site is hidden. There's no noise that is created from our inverters or transformers on site outside of probably the hum you hear in this room from these lights. We don't produce a lot of waste outside of during construction. Our traffic impacts are minimal, less than a residential home after construction. We usually have O&M on site maybe two to three times a month and sometimes two to three times a week depending on just general operations and maintenance elements of the project. Construction is, is quick. This project could be built in approximately two to three months. And then we will completely decommission the site at the end of its life or repower it depending on the, the length of the rec contract. That's a quick rundown of the project. I guess I'll open it to questions or...
So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or question on this application, if you could please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and then what your comment or question is. If there's anyone with questions on this application.
My name is Kevin Cunningham, 405 Mississippi Monroe Road. I have a quick question. Comparing this to what was the application for the 3.5, and that was through the state. You're pulling this back to a 1 megawatt. The footprint, I just wanted to cross reference the footprint.
Yep, that's fair. Alright. So we basically have eliminated this weapon drop. That was permitted, so this piece is done. The residential parcel, and this piece is done. So it's literally only just this 1 megawatt.
Can you show that on your projection?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So while you're pulling that up, I'll ask another question just tying it back into the state.
Yep.
Project. So there is no issue with the burnable, there is no issue then with the weapons?
There isn't. One of the elements of the denial from the state is, is concerns about impacts to the burnables. That's obviously a conservation commission element to be discussed next week. And we have removed the wetland impacts for the crossing. Those are still permitted with the door. And we ultimately reduced the footprint to a lesser sized cost interconnection at 1 megawatt. That's the reason why we're here, is we can still get our project to pencil as it stands with an interconnection of 1 megawatt where obviously we tried to get free on the site. It wasn't cost effective for some of the roads that we had to build as well as the Siting Council found other determinations by they did not want to approve it. We did retain CLA engineers to finalize the design here. They've implemented a lot of the burnable, amphibious stuff in their erosion and sediment control plant to this design. So that's, that's our adjustments since the application to Siting Council.
Okay. I appreciate that. I mean, I have no problem with the site where it is. It's pulled back, it's off the road, so the original is minimal impact there. My concern is really just the weapons and the burnable issues. So, because he's having a problem, please.
Anyone else with a comment or question on this application?
Rachel, so let me try and just talk with Road. A couple of questions. So the upfront of your system, is it going to benefit residents directly into solving back into the grid? Is that correct?
It, it is, but I mean, it's one, it's electrons. Those grids, those electrons are going out to the grid purchased by EverSource at a fixed speed for the rec costs. And then you guys are buying electrons. Now, I can't tell you if you're buying solar electrons or electrons produced by XYZ or what. But that was the program that was incentivized by EverSource. We did enter that program and awarded the contract.
Okay. And 1 megawatt system doesn't seem to be too large. The sun light here in Connecticut isn't that great. Why don't you do a 20 megawatt where in the west someplace where it's...
Oh, we try. The price of power in the Northeast is expensive. I mean, that's, that's the reason why it's appealing to developers. It's why there's a lot more people from Minnesota. We don't have as much solar on homes like you do out here. And, and the reason why you're doing it is because of the price of your power. And that's why a 1 megawatt facility can still work out here for us.
Okay. And just one other question. You mentioned that after the lifecycle of the system, it would be decommissioned. Is that all in writing that the property would be completely cleared out afterward?
It's something that we can work with, with the town. It is put in writing in fashion with the Siting Council's approvals. It's pretty typical to do that in the Northeast.
And what's the typical lifecycle?
The rec contract is 15 years, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't sell it on an open market or to a town or something like that after that. So the lifecycle is somewhat dependent on technology, but it can definitely be inked into a decommissioning plan of some sort. Where at the end of that lifecycle, that contract, you can re-explore decommissioning. You know, there's recycled materials, there's a lot of copper on the sites, those transformers are future. So, so there's still a lot of value in raw materials that are on the site versus just a bunch of glass solar panels that are 15 years old. This is the old, the original 3.5 megawatt facility that was presented to the Siting Council. This system has gotten slightly smaller. This one's completely removed and this one's removed.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from audience members? Comments or questions from staff?
This does have to go to the wetlands commission, unfortunately, next week, so we cannot, well, we can close the public hearing, that device keeps open. We're going to have to arrange a lot of the wetlands commission, so...
Regarding the decommissioning, will you be providing a decommissioning bond?
We could do that. We'll work with you on that. I don't know if you'd have a third party engineer reviewing that for us or internal staff, but it's something that we can work with you on.
Okay. Comments or questions from board members? Okay. So given that we have to wait for wetland approval, we'll need a motion to keep this public hearing open to our January meetings. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, public hearing will continue into January 8th meeting. Can I bring John Meyer back to complete this? I just want the record to know that John Meyer is being receded for the remainder of the meeting. So I will call the regular meeting to order. We have additions or corrections to the agenda. So under new items, adding item B, Z 2018-1470, I'll need a motion to add that to the agenda, please. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, vanning to the agenda? Any opposed? Okay, so we'll add that new item B. Citizen participation, this would be for comments from the audience not related to an agenda item. Okay. Moving on to unfinished old business, Z 2018-1452 was continued to the January meeting. Postponed, sorry. Postponed. Item B, Z 2018-1454 was continued. So new business, Z 2018-1467 of A Couch and Sons LLC requesting a site plan review for construction of a 30 foot by 40 foot building and a 24 by 24 foot garage on property located at 506 Norwich Road, Plainfield, MAP 1P, Block 38, Lot 7, C2 zoning district. Are you speaking for the applicant? Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Paul Archer with Archer Survey, representing the Couch and Sons. Mr. Couch is our superintendent here, if you have any questions.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a rest of a meeting that we have to attend to. So if you can hold any sidebar conversations or just take them outside so that the record can clearly pick up the applicant's comments, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. The parcel we're looking at is the corner of 14A and the 12. It used to be the old Molson, I think is where it was. He was the CPA. It's right there. Now, we were, we were in front of this commission back in April of 2013 at which we had approval of this lot for, it was a 2,100 square foot, more of a bank style building with a drive through, wraparound and all that for this lot that was approved here. That didn't quite, things happened here when we were building. Mr. Couch owns his property now. He is a builder, he is a contractor. So all he's looking to do is put a 40 by 30 garage, which then he can use for his own, his own business. Put his trucks in, put his bow in, put his tractor in, stuff like that. And at the same time, having a little trouble with the existing building that there, we're looking to add a 24 by 24 garage onto the existing building. Now, I have a picture to show you to deal with. I turned this in and I got, you know, some comments back from Ryan, which I pretty much addressed most of them. And one of, one of Ryan's concerns was, you know, his comments with DOT approval coming up in 14A. Back when in April, we had DOT approval, we both. Now, and on 14A, what I'm going to show you is that, that what we're planning on using is an existing paper that's existing there, alright? So we're not looking to propose anything new, any more proposal what's there. We had approval from DOT that we were going to use that. So what we're proposing now is a much less, you know, less than usual we're hoping for. So that's what we're trying, that's what we're proposing there. The other problem, the other question that Ryan had was, the biggest concern was that on the east side of us, the lot that's up in this area here, this lot up here, that, that is, that is zone residential. Okay, where are they? You can see a 2 zone, that's in the R 30 zone. And according to your regulations that a buffer is required, 25 foot buffer is required between any commercial and residential zone. But what we're going to show you is, this is how, this is how everything looks as of right now. And you can get an idea that what it is, that stone wall that's in the back there is a stone retaining wall that's back there. So that's probably a 3 or 4 foot retaining wall. And as you can see, the neighbor to the back has also put up a 6 foot high stockade fence in the back there. And you can also see, and you can also see the bushes, the natural vegetation that's in the front are all lilac bushes that wrap around that, that are wrapped around the front of that there. So we're actually, here's another. And so we're not really proposing like now, any buffer or anything due to the fact that it is existing there. And the other problem we have is we really don't know how to handle that. If you already have a 6 foot high retaining wall and then you have a 6 foot high stockade fence up there there, I don't know what we could possibly put there that would make any sense to them that, you know, that would change anything or plot anything to their view.
Is, is what you mean by a 6 foot high retaining wall here?
Yeah. Four foot. That's 4 foot high. This is a 6 foot high stockade fence. So that, that was one of the other questions I think, again. One of the other questions that Ryan had was parking places, which we showed on, on the plan is we have four parking places for the garage. Due to the fact that we're not proposing any offices or anything like that, it's going to be strictly used for Mr. Couch, Mr. Couch only in his business. Where we're showing that the other 24 foot garage will be entered off of Route 12 on the existing pavement here. And this will give you a good idea as to... And this will give you a good idea as to what the side of the building looks like there. So he would be, he would be adding the, the twenty-four-by-twenty-four garage off of where is, basically where the truck is parked in that location right there. That's pretty much it. Like I said, he's booked up, he's just trying to utilize the, the existing property to the best that he could possibly utilize it. And the only thing that he has right now is to put, you know, a garage in there so that he can house his own equipment.
So the two parking areas are not connected?
That is absolutely correct. What we're proposing is a, at the, the westerly side of the end of this parking lot, you can see a graphic area there, and there's a detail of town here, which is basically a stone trench that all the water that's going to come off the pavement will be collected into that stone trench right here.
Any comments from commission members on the site plan review? Comments from staff?
My only concern is that the neighbors really shouldn't be required to maintain a fence in order to have copper. And there really should be some sort of planting up there, the applicant's property, to, to screen in case that fence does come down in the future.
Agreed.
And I don't think the applicant has any problem working with staff as to determine what he feels would be the best type of plantings. I don't think a fence is going to do any good because I think to keep a fence down, all you're going to do is block the stone wall. But I think it'd be an agreement to, to work with Ryan's staff here as to figure out what the best planting would be to go along here.
Yeah, we can do that prior to any building permits being issued, coupled with some sort of vegetative buffer. I don't feel that a twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer is needed coupled with some sort of evergreen screening.
So that would be more like, like what?
Well, the evergreens, however large they get. Maybe, maybe two stagger rows.
And did you concur with the assessment on the DOT APR?
Yes, we will be, DOT did allow for any, for the drive-through, utilizing that existing paved APR along with the existing APR out on Route 12. This is a less intense use. We will need confirmation from DOT to approve this prior to the building permits being issued. But we can work with them on that. So you can make that condition as well as work with staff on the DOT.
Not the DOT approval?
DOT approval, you should make a condition that they will not get permits to build until that is...
So that would be the CO condition, not the zoning application?
No, this would be the zoning application. So prior to the zoning permit issued to the applicant to build, we would need confirmation from DOT to approve the use. And prior to the zone permit to build, we would need to work with the applicant on the issue of...
And then this would be kind of home-based with the business. It wouldn't be a customer-in-and-out type of business.
Absolutely correct.
Any other comments from staff or questions from commissioners? Okay, so it's a site plan review. So if there's no other comments or questions, we can entertain a motion on the application.
Do you care what you say?
This is a site plan review, so this is not a public hearing because it's already zoned for the purpose that they're requesting.
I can motion to approve the conditions of the, the applicant's...